Welcome, everybody. We call the order. Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Monday, May 17th, 2021, 5:30 PM. Maureen, roll call, please.
Weigel.
Here.
Doppler. Here. Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
All present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. I think since I took the ult this, it might have been the first night we had everybody here. So, very exciting. Like Kyle just said, we're all here for the Girl Scouts, so excellent. 1.2, Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, 1.3, Mayor's Announcements. Just got four announcements today. I wanted to give a big thank you to the Cirrus Aircraft CEO, Sean Nielsen. Spent some time up here and looking at future development out there. Really grateful for their commitment to the Grand Forks community over the last 25 years. We were able to present them with an original convertible stock note from 19, was it 1997? So, we were able to frame that and give it to them. It had been converted long ago, but it was a pretty exciting moment. And a big thanks to Bill King, too, who's been a much longer fixture at Cirrus. We had the groundbreaking out of BMX. Wanted to give a big shout out to Danny as well on that project, located way out there just south of the Alara Center. I think they're outshaping it right now. Pretty excited. Hopefully, June 1st, everything will come in, come in and be done by then, and we're going to see the first race there. We had the Department of Commerce in, actually, a few times over the last couple of weeks. The Director Laman, James Lamont, excuse me, was out at Grand Sky. Met him out there for some UAS talk, and then he was at a roundtable at the Chamber of Commerce. And then we ended with a meet and greet with some of the Grand Forks new Americans and immigrant community, talked about business and accounting and other processes and how to move forward there. So, big shout out to the Department of Commerce and James Lamont. And then, just wanted to highlight, we were out on Thursday at the North Dakota Law Enforcement Memorial honoring all the peace officers over the last, well, since North Dakota was formed. Unfortunately, there's 65 members on that wall now. But it was a, you know, it was a chance to remember, you know, Cody Holtie as the last one that was there. So, I was glad to be out there and be present with a lot of our police officers made the trip as well. So, good showing by Grand Forks there. That's all I got for Mayor's Announcements. So, let's move on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1, Girl Scouts Community Project Presentation.
All right, Troop 20266. I hear we've got a little presentation for us, so please take.
Hi. Thank you for allowing us to talk with you today. We are Troop 20266, and the girls would like to share with you the Take Action project they have been working on this year.
Mayor, if we could have the lights, then we can, you can see it a little bit better. Why don't you give us your name first?
My name's Cory. These are the steps we completed for our project. Identify a community problem, engage local governments, seek a solution, gain community support, and raise funds. The problem we identified is that the dog park is open from 6:00 AM until 11:00 PM, but there is no lighting in or around the park. And there are less daylight hours in winter, which does not support dog park visitors. For this project, we talked to the Grand Forks Park District Greenway Company, City Engineering, and City Administration. It needs to be a movable design in case of flooding. It needs to have power for the lights, and it needs to be easy to take care of. The solution we came up with is the solar-powered lights. Here is the light pole with the solar panel on top and the LED blob. And here is how the light pole bolts down. Here are possible locations for six solar lights. This would benefit residents, visitors, and dogs. It would increase safety. More people would use it, and it is a clean energy source. It will be beneficial anytime it is dark outside. We submit these petitions to Mayor Brandon Bochenski and to
Nailed it.
City Hall of Grand Forks. Our troop is donating all the money we raised this year, $4,175. That is over 115,000 cookies. We ask that the mayor and the Grand Forks City Council will take into consideration the overwhelming community support for this project to install lights at the dog park for the safety and enjoyment of the citizens and their furry friends. Thank you for listening to our presentation, and now our troop would like to present this check to the dogs of Grand Forks.
Well, thank you very much, Troop 20266. We are excited, and we're hoping to get the final details ironed out and pair some city funds with that as well to get those accomplished. So, thank you.
2.2 is a Legislative Session Overview.
Mr. Bernstein, please.
Yeah, and I get to follow that. Thanks. I didn't sell any cookies for this. So, the 2021 Legislative Session wrapped up at the end of April, and from the City of Grand Forks Legislative Committee, co-chaired by Mr. Weber and Mr. Veen, we had a fairly successful legislative session. Part of the success means certain bills maybe didn't see the light of day. A lot of testimony as far as bills that maybe limited local control at various levels, and we did a good job as a legislative committee in a city in helping other cities as well to make sure those bills didn't get through. Just a couple of highlights. If you read the news, the big part of the legislature was bonding. They passed a bonding bill, House Bill 1431. So, in that bill, it's a $1.1 billion bill. That bill has, puts money into the Infrastructure Revolving Loan Fund that we have access to get money from at 2% over, I believe they increased it to 30 years for bonding. And they also increased the cap for political subdivisions to be from $15 million up to $40 million that could be borrowed against the Infrastructure Revolving Loan Fund. They also did a lot of work with the Legacy Fund, both taking earnings from Legacy Fund and reinvesting it into North Dakota, and even taking some principal from the Legacy Fund and reinvesting that as well. So, including the money from the bonding bill that went into the Infrastructure Revolving Loan Fund, an additional $260 million from Legacy Fund earnings was put into the Infrastructure Revolving Loan Fund, which we use as well. Just a couple of notes. If you remember from the previous session, Prairie Dog, which was state revenue getting put in various buckets, one of those buckets was a city bucket, if you will. Things had to be filled in order. The city bucket used to be bucket number seven. After this legislative session, we are now bucket number eight. They reorganized some of those buckets. So, we have to wait in line behind the SIP fund from the state. And then, towards the end of the session, there was a lot of talk regarding our pension program, ND-PERS. I spoke in front of this body, talking about how there is amendment made that was going to go to a defined contribution from a defined benefit. That bill failed on the floor, so there are no changes to the pension plan the next biennium. But there is a bill that passed that is going to be a study to determine what it would take and what it would look like to go to a defined contribution plan from a defined benefit plan. And then, other than that, the rest, in your packet, you'll see the City Report, and also, we had a meeting last week with the North Dakota League of Cities. They had regional meetings, so the Northeast North Dakota meeting was last Wednesday, and their presentation is attached to the packet as well. Should note, we heard from multiple departments, from multiple legislators, legislators, and offices from the state, our meeting in early March was a big success. It was really good. It was well-attended from the City of Grand Forks, not just the city, but the, not just city government, but, you know, other entities from the city. That went really well, and we had a good feedback from that. And before we go here, we'll go to Todd real quick to take a look at some of the things looking forward.
Hey, thank you, John, Mayor Bochenski, members of City Council. I want to make a few more highlights. One good, another good thing, Senator Holmberg will be leading the legislative interim committees, and he took a two-year period off where the House took it over, but they've deferred our Senator Holmberg, and so he'll be leading a lot of interim studies and putting the team together. So, that's a big deal for us on what's going to happen, because there's a lot of work that goes on in this two-year period, not as much as during COVID, but there was a lot of great work. So, that's another great thank you to our Senator Holmberg and what his colleagues think of him. Number two, the North Dakota session, the mayor and I had the great opportunity to meet with Senator Holmberg and Representative Sanford, and they're really key and critical on the infrastructure and appropriation side of both the House and the Senate. And number one, they were really thankful for all that John has done, week to week, and putting those updates out. So, thank you, John. So, they hold John in high esteem, and I think in our whole group. So, thank you, council members, Weber and Veen, too, for, and all the department heads. So, they were really positive about those Friday updates, all that we do throughout the week really means a lot to them. So, that's, it makes us feel good about what we do when sometimes we matter. We question whether it matters what we do. The other thing is, in the fall of this year, they're going to, they're going to come back into session. It'll be redistricting, but the state also has about a little over $1 billion in stimulus funds they need to appropriate. So, we're going to be working with the governor and his administration. I think that's where we're going to have to focus our attention on possible solutions to some of our infrastructure needs in our community. So, we'll be doing that. I suspect that will lead up to a fall session where they'll finally approve some of the distribution of that billion dollars. On June 7th, also, you know, we're getting stimulus funds, and we're waiting for some of it to be wired into our account this week with Maureen and her team. So, on June 7th, you're going to have Team Grand Forks come forward with you about some of the community-wide initiatives that we'll move forward with. So, the Team Grand Forks will be here, chamber-led, with all of our partners throughout the community. And I think at that same meeting, we're going to start our budget process with the salary plan and some of the leading indicators of our budget. And I think at that time, Maureen Storsted and our team will come together with some of our initial thoughts on the stimulus funds, and we're, should go in advance of when the state. So, lots going on, I think, between now and the fall, between our budget and what the state ultimately does with their stimulus funds is going to be a lot to happen. So, thanks for all your guys' support, and Mayor, and community members. I think I was, I would say it's a successful year again.
All right, any questions? Actually, let's, you know, first, we got Mr. Veen and Mr. Weber. Your committee is winding down. Appreciate all your hard work on it. You'll be ramped up again two years from now, but any parting words on legislative side of things?
Actually, the, this is an ongoing committee. Some of our most important work happens during the interim session and preparing for next time. So, we can't wait until two years from now and then start reacting. So, we, waiting to see what, which of these bills will be studied, which of the, what decisions. Senator Holmberg will be leading on the studies, but the PERS is one of the 13 required studies. Is that correct?
Yes, they did require, and that's Bill 1209. Yes, that is one of the required studies. There was a version of a bill out there that was going to have that have to be done by their session in the fall. That is not the case. Has to be done by the next biennium.
Very good. Thanks, John. But Mayor, you're absolutely right. Co-chairman Veen and I, we do step back a little bit, and of course, the department heads, they're working and thinking about these things all the time. Thanks. Mr. Veen?
Well, I would just add, Brett Weber really stepped up, but I really appreciate it. I was a little bit busier than I planned this last few months, and as far as council leadership, he did. But I thought the City of Grand Forks did an amazing job. Mayor, you've been down there, did testimony that we haven't had in the past. That was, I know was very influential and beneficial. John, your work was great, Todd, and I think all the department heads that were there for all the meetings and followed that did an amazing job. But I'd just like to say thanks for everybody for the work they did.
And our city attorney.
Our attorney, thank you.
He's an important part of the team as well. Yes, good.
He kind of ended up being the star. The League of Cities kept coming to Grand Forks asking legal questions, so I found that to be interesting. So, thank you, Mr. Gostad. Any further comments or questions? All right. We'll move on to the COVID, go ahead, Maureen, 2.3.
That's fine. 2.3, COVID-19 update.
Mr. Duhits.
Mayor Bochenski, members of the council, I'm Michael Duhits with the Grand Forks Public Health, here to do an update on our COVID situation. Looking at the Health Officers Dashboard, we are now back below that 10 cases per 100,000 threshold, which should put us back into green. Unfortunately, we've seen a decrease in the number of tests in the community, which has just barely ticked us back into yellow on the dashboard. This is reminding us of a challenge that we're going to be facing as we have more of our community vaccinated. The more individuals who are vaccinated, the chances of them asymptomatic spreading is almost nil, and so it doesn't really make sense for us to be relying as heavily on tests completed as a metric for our Health Officers Dashboard. So, that is something we will be considering this coming week, is how we can adjust the dashboard to fit the current situation in Grand Forks, you know, right now. Looking at our COVID case rate across age groups, you know, our largest age group right now for COVID cases is that 10 to 19 age group. A good share of that age group, which is unvaccinated right now, and there is, you know, a little bit smaller number in the 0 to 9 age group. If I had to point out any, you know, slight worries in the dashboard right now, it would be that, you know, we are still seeing cases in younger individuals as our numbers decrease. That is where we're going to see it, just because that is a group that we can't vaccinate as well. And we did have about 45 cases or 46 cases in the past week. Looking at our COVID vaccination rate, we're right at about 40% of the population that's been fully vaccinated, about 43% who have had one dose. So, we're 43% of the way to that 60% threshold. One concern I see on here is that our number is decreasing now from, in that, in that yellow category, the number of people who have had their first dose and are waiting for their second dose. That number is now at about 3%. At its peak, it was about 12%. So, we do have a, you know, ever-decreasing number of people who have had their first dose and are waiting for their second dose. We are short about 11,000 people to our, you know, to our overall goal of reaching 60% of the population. Looking at the metropolitan statistical area, so when we add Polk County in, that does also create a little bit more of a concern as well, as Polk County has experienced a similar decrease in the number of first doses that they've been giving, but their decrease was right around that 30-ish, 30 to 35% range. And so, that does bring us down overall, or as a whole, you know, brings us down to about 37%. So, it drops us almost two whole percentage points and gives us about 22,000 people that need to be vaccinated in the combined Grand Forks-Polk Counties to achieve that herd immunity. So, if we look at that graphically, this is what we're at right now. We have about four of those little people on there that represents about 2,000 people that still need to get their second dose of vaccine, and then they will turn into the green. But we still have a fair number of the red individuals, so that's about 24 boxes to that 12,000 who are red on there and people that we still need to reach to get vaccinated. Looking at the metropolitan statistical area, that red, that red group does increase, even though I had to add more boxes, that red group does increase a fair bit. So, you know, that is why I bring this up as a concern, you know, that we do have more people that we need to reach. Comparing Grand Forks to our peer communities, Grand Forks has kind of been riding second fiddle with Cass County. You're at about 40% versus 43%, but we are still much higher than the state overall, which is at about 35%. Ward County of our peer counties has been the one that has had the most difficulties with vaccination. They've also been the ones that have had difficulties, all along with high COVID case burdens, you know, high death rates, things like that. Looking a little bit more regionally, Grand Forks is about right in the middle in the population that we do have vaccinated. So, you know, I think our situation is very similar across the line. We've, you know, been doing the best we can in the situation that we've all been facing, I think, is a, is a good, you know, is a good kind of way of sumating this. Even Olmsted County, Minnesota, where they have the Mayo Clinic and a very strong healthcare workforce, isn't quite to that 60% yet. You know, building off of that, you know, it seems like we've all kind of hit this wall where, you know, there was a lot of inbuilt demand, there was a lot of low-hanging fruit. People wanted to get vaccinated, so, and then we kind of hit this wall, and we didn't expect to hit the wall so hard, but it was just, all of a sudden, people just, you know, it's like we reached everyone who was going to come to us, that was going to come make an appointment, and now it's, you know, a matter of kind of picking up the, you know, that last, you know, for us, 11,000 people, you know, slowly but surely. We have had a little bit of success recently with the, with the CDC changing their guidelines. We've had some good turnout at our HUGOs vaccination events, which does give us a little bit of hope that, you know, if we kind of scale it into a community, you know, into the community in small kind of bursts where we have the vaccine available with very low, you know, very low barriers so that you can go somewhere where you normally get it, or you can get it close by to your normal, to your current living location, options like that. That's going to, going to be what's going to factor into our plan for our summer vaccination schedule. So, looking at our upcoming events, we are, you know, we are standing, or we've stood up our HUGOs vaccination events. You know, we had a good article in The Herald this past weekend about our HUGOs vaccination events, so that was kind of our testing of our lower, you know, our lower-volume vaccine events. This coming Thursday, we'll be at Home of Economy, who's been wonderful about offering a space to offer vaccine on the northern side of the city. So, we will be there on Thursday, you know, doing a run-up of our mobile vaccine truck. So, we have a, we have a trailer that we'll be using to bring vaccine out into the wider community, so we need to get that up and running. So, we'll be doing that on Thursday. Home of Economy has offered us some nice incentives, and we've had businesses, local businesses, reaching out to offer us incentives to give to people to get vaccinated. So, if you aren't vaccinated yet, if you come out to Home of Economy, it'll be worth your while if you're looking for a place to get vaccinated. We also have our vaccine partners, so basically, most healthcare providers in the community, a good share of the pharmacies in the community as well. So, more information is there on the vaccines.gov. And we will be at the Home of Economy Food Truck Event on June 5th. Again, they are advertising that to individuals. We hope to be able to reach a large number of people there. So, you can go to your food truck, or you can go get your vaccine, then while you're waiting, you can go to your food truck, get your food, you know, and enjoy it all around. Again, Home of Economy has been wonderful, are wonderful about accommodating us, as has HUGOs. So, looking at our bottom line, we continue to have low case incidence. I think, you know, what we were seeing for the increase in April was kind of, you know, it could be equated to a fourth wave, which turned out to be more like a fourth blip, which does show the power of vaccinations, I think, in the community compared to what other places we're seeing, particularly in Canada. The vaccine pop-ups, you know, though it's been kind of a slow uptake, or, you know, a slow start, we are seeing some success in those, and it could be the way that we get to more vaccinated individuals by having, you know, kind of a slog-out ground game this coming summer. We still are above state average, so even though I have a little bit of doom and gloom regarding our low first-dose rate, we are still above the state average. That said, Polk County is, you know, is not above the average in Minnesota, so that is, that will be kind of a drag to our overall, overall community. We keep working on incorporating vaccination data into the Health Officers Dashboard. That had been something that had been brought up early on by Councilmember Weigel, and it has been something thought about for some time, and I think it's time. We'll improve vaccine uptake. And then, our threats, we still have that young group of individuals, 12 and under, that can't get the vaccine. So, you know, hopefully, we can reach that 12, 15 age group, that's about 3,000 people, you know, reach them well, as well as other high school-age students. With that, I am open to any questions. And Debbie's online as well.
Mr. Duhits, I just had one question first on the Health Officers Dashboard. Are you planning on making changes to that metric for testing so it continues to be relevant? Or are we, is it going to be kind of fading off, or what's your thoughts?
So, Mayor Bochenski, we'll be meeting with Dr. Walls this week, and we, you know, I'll bring my data to him. I think we can work on a plan that will kind of adjust the Health Officers Dashboard down a little bit, you know, relatively proportional to vaccination. You know, of course, you know, anytime you adjust it, you have to look at what your, you know, what the repercussions could be. You know, we want to make sure we aren't in a situation where, you know, we should be kind of sounding the alarm, like, you know, all too bad at critical capacity, relatively unlikely, given the amount of vaccine, but we don't want to miss that situation, you know, by, you know, the way that we tweak the dashboard. So, that is why it has been a little bit of a process to get there.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Duhits and Ms. Swanson? Do you have something, Brett?
Sure.
Mr. Weber, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. When we add a new population, like the, down to 12-year-olds, how does that affect our herd immunity numbers? Because suddenly, we have a larger herd that we're measuring, right?
So, Councilmember Weber, it doesn't actually change the size of the herd, because the herd is everybody in Grand Forks County in this instance. So, it does increase our vaccine-eligible population, so it makes more people in the herd able to get the vaccine. So, it moves us up from about 56,000 to about 59,000 for the number of people within the herd that can get the vaccine. So, in the media, you might see, you know, that they talk about 70% of the people eligible getting it is what they need. This is very similar, but we're just using the entire herd from the get-go, because everybody, you know, or pretty much everybody in the community is vulnerable to getting COVID, so we needed to think about the whole herd the entire time.
Very good. Thanks for clearing that up for me. Quick shout-out to HUGOs and to Home of Economy for their support, HUGOs all along through this pandemic. Have we reached out to any large employers and the possibility of doing vaccination events at the worksite?
So, Councilmember Weber, we have had, through our vaccine partners, a number of onsite clinics. So, those are primarily done through organizations in the community like Wellcore Health, Ultra Employer Health Solutions, organizations like that that have gone out, but most of the major employers gone out. But most of the major employers either have been offered or have had a vaccine opportunity there. And then we would certainly hope to incorporate, you know, the, the large employers as potential locations this summer for, you know, a follow-up opportunity potentially.
Wonderful. And I didn't notice it in the strengths and weaknesses, but the variation, the variances, the, the new strains. What do we know about what's happening in North Dakota or our community in relation to those variants?
So as far as it goes for the variants, they are present. What, you know, what kind of the national, you know, what kind of was nationally reported in the past week is that they're realizing that the impact of the variants in vaccinated individuals isn't quite as worrisome as originally thought. And so that was one of the decisions that factored into the change in masking guidance. So, you know, that's, that's what I can say on that, that side. I know that variants are present here. You know, it's a small number of overall tests that are tested for the variant. So the presence of a variant is important, but we're never going to really understand the magnitude of the variant because it does take a lot of work to fully sequence, you know, a sample. So they're present in North Dakota, most variant types are present in North Dakota. But, you know, we aren't going to know the full magnitude.
Very good. Thanks. Overall, lots of great news and hoping to be green very soon, right? Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything further? All right. Thank you, Mr. Dillitz. Ms. Swanson, thank you.
2.4 is a proclamation, National Police Week, May 9th through 15th, 2021, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15th, 2021, American Legion Auxiliary Poppy Day, May 29th, 2021.
Thank you, Maureen. It's proclamation, National Police Week, May 9th to the 15th, Police Officers Memorial Day, May 15th. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Police Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week. Whereas the members of the Grand Forks Police Department and area law enforcement play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our community. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. Whereas the men and women of the Grand Forks Police Department increasingly provide a vital service to the public. Now therefore I, Mayor Brandon Bochensky of Grand Forks, North Dakota, call upon the citizens and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 9th to the 15th, 2021 as Police Week, with the appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all the people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And proclamation, Poppy Day, American Legion Auxiliary, May 29th, 2021. Whereas America is the land of the freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, and whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, and whereas a nation at peace must, must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, and whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of all lives in, in all war, of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Therefore I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 29th, 2021 as Poppy Day, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. Thank you. Moving on to three public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
3.1, public hearing on application for tax incentive for Core Scientific.
Thank you. We'll open the public hearing on 3.1. All right, the public hearing is closed. I think we've got Mr. Pratt on the line, but I don't know that we'll need him to speak, but just wanted to, to give a, a big thanks to him and the Core Scientific Company for all, how, as easy as it's been to work with you guys, we certainly enjoyed what you're bringing to Grand Forks. And this is just a great example of what having, you know, master planning, having infrastructure ready so these projects can, can happen and happen quickly. You know, it, it went pretty seamlessly. I think that was a lot of hard work behind the scenes to, to getting a $100 million project through. And we'll see, you know, in five years, quite an increase on the tax increment. And in the meantime, we're, our franchise fee is going to see a big boost to the city of Grand Forks. So, Mr. Pratt, maybe if you want to say anything. Otherwise, you know, thank you for everything that your company has brought to the community.
I'll just say thank you for the continued support. We really appreciate it.
All right. Open up any...
Move approved.
Motion approved with Mr. Weber.
Second.
Second for Mr. Cavami. Further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. 3.1 carries.
3.2, public hearing and second reading of ordinance to amend the section 18-0301. Signs as related to Merrell's.
All right, 3.2, we'll open the public hearing. All right, public hearing is, is closed. Mr. Brooks is here, if anyone has any questions for him. Otherwise, entertain comment, motion.
Move approved.
Got a motion to approve from Mr. Weigle, a second from Ms. Docler. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Four action items. Let's see. I'm going to get 4.8 and 4.9 polled. And then I know on, on 414, we've got Andrea, Edwardson's going to present, and we've got a consultant available as well. Let's see, was there anything else council members wanted to have polled tonight? All right, moving forward then on the consent agenda for 4.1, 4.2, 4.3, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.7, 4.10, 4.11, 4.12. And that's it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those items carry. Thank you. 4.8.
Mayor, did we get a motion and second on that?
Oh, did we get a motion and second on that?
I don't think we did.
Oh, jeez. Might, might do that first here. We got a motion from Mr. Weber.
Second.
Second for Mr. Weigle. Any further comment? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry. Still made it through. Thanks, Maureen.
Thank you. Then 4.8, wastewater treatment facility plan, project number 8199.
Mr. Phelan.
Mayor Bochensky, members of City Council, I'll give you one more overview. I know this is your third one. So what we're asking you this evening is to approve the master plan, the wastewater treatment plant master plan. And the master plan calls for us to move forward to the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, for them to approve our, our master plan so that we can move forward with further improvements and funding, more importantly. So we're asking the option we've moved forward with, which we've determined is the best from a capital operation, maintenance, and qualitative, is to retrofit our bioreactors with a biological nutrient removal system, along with de-watering and air drying our solids. And so that's the option we're moving forward with. The Department of Environmental Quality will review that option and either provide, provide a thumbs up, some thumbs down, or some sort of modification there. So that's what we're asking for this evening. As with all master plans, these get incorporated into annual budgets and, and annual projects. So you'll see the, these projects move forward over the next probably 10 years as we move forward. You know, Ken, Mr. Vian asked, you know, why did we pick the original, you know, oxygen system that we did? You know, none of us were around here. You know, that master planning started in 1995 with, moving forward with construction in 2000. And I just want to give a real huge shout out to, we have operators that started with that wastewater treatment plant in the early 2000s, and have really made something of that wastewater treatment plant as we move forward. So over the, over these 20 years, we've taken on a lot of growth and expansion from a residential, commercial perspective. So we started out with a planning of 49,000. We're at about 64,000, which includes East Grand Forks. That plant has been able to allow Simplot to move from an aerobic system to an anaerobic system, and that was a big deal. So that Simplot further invested in their pre-treatment system, through their expansions from the freezer on down. So we were able to adapt to their, to new found strength. And obviously Red River Biorefrinery, and certainly they provide us higher strength wastewater than we anticipated, and have, have also consumed some of our wastewater treatment capacity. We're not asking for, mainly our capacity is from a treatment perspective, not from a hydraulic perspective. We are looking to retrofit those four reactor tanks, and so we're going to reuse those reactor tanks as opposed to what we talked about last time I was here, adding another series of tanks. So we're really redoing those existing facilities. So when we look over the, the time horizon, we are looking at, I showed you kind of, we're going to relook at it for the mayor's '22 budget and beyond. We're looking at about a 3%. And so we're, we're saying that's probably a little bit over inflation. I think, you know, inflation generally has been between 2 and, 2 and 1/2% for construction. So, you know, we're plus or minus about where inflation is, looking at over, over the time period. We are at, at the midpoint of our comparison, benchmark comparison communities. And by the end of this, assuming that they do the rates that they anticipate, we're going to end up in the, in the midpoint. Important to move forward with this is Mr. Berndstrom talked about the, the low interest, long-term low interest program that made in North Dakota. We, we've enjoyed $15 million of investment, and some of that includes some of this infrastructure offsite that we invested for the water treatment plant that's also going to serve Core Scientific. That was part of that $15 million, along, along with a few other areas as part of a strategic infrastructure growth areas. These funds, you know, from that 15 to 40 million dollar increment, we could use these wastewater funds as part of that. They would have the added benefit of not having all the federal strings attached to them too. So, because they're state funds. We're also going to be looking at, with, regarding the stimulus funds that the state is getting, you know, really to promote not only drinking water, which is always a little fancier fund for people to allocate funds to, but also look at wastewater grant funds. So we will be working, working on that over, over the time period too. So I anticipate us having further discussions at the budget time in '22 and beyond. You'll see a report come back probably with a, hopefully with a final approval from the state. And then we'll start moving forward with first steps. But there'll be a lot of discussion about wastewater treatment plant in itself. And, you know, that facility has served the city well over the last 20 years. And, and now what we're looking forward is for the next 20 years, after renewing it and moving forward. So, you know, there's some, there's probably some poor examples of deferring maintenance for 20 years and then having a, a large bill. I think in this case, we have a really strong core, and now it's time to, to renew that facility and do it in a way where ratepayers can afford it, whether you're residential, commercial, or industrial. So with that, I take any final questions. That's what we're asking for right now, with more details to come.
Thank you. So this will come forward as these projects go through, either in the budget or as, before council. And I got, well, I guess I got one other question. You know, we built this wastewater treatment plant, and obviously the, the rates going up is, is the big concern. Is it safe to say that a plant that's in, fully at its capacity or close to it is probably the most efficient time that it's at? But, and then as you expand and when you have, you know, room for growth, and say you're only using it at 60%, is probably the most expensive time for a large treatment plant? So as we build the new one, is there going to be a period as we get to fill this up where rates will start to come back down?
Yeah. Mayor Bochensky and members of City Council, I think what we've seen is that we really had, if you were here from 2000, 2010, we had some major rate increases because this plant costs more than we anticipated. Plus, we had a lot of surplus capacity, both from a hydraulic perspective and also from a treatment perspective. And so because we didn't have a, a volume of users, we all paid more than we ever anticipated. So again, I'm thankful that we got through those first several years of this plant. But I think now when we look at what we've done from Simplot really solidifying itself in the community and expanding to adding East Grand Forks, and for the city growing over these last 10 years, along with Red River Biorefrinery, we're kind of at our 20-year where we've, we've really used up the capacity. And generally, facilities like this are, are meant to use up its capacity in 20 years, both from a hydraulic and a, and a treatment capacity. And then you look to forward for new, new projects. So our, our strategy always has been debt service, you know, not defer maintenance, put away enough capital funds, but always to find low interest, long-term loans, along with grants to fund it. So each generation's paying for the use of their treatment plant. And so if you've been around it for 20 years, we're, we're going to exhaust about $31 million. The debt will go away this fall in anticipation of, of that being paid off.
Thank you. Well, we certainly, I mean, you can, you can see what happens at the school district. If you don't take care of these things, you can end up in a, in a real problem later on down the line. But for now, all we're doing is this is being sent to the state and getting approval on the plan. You know, all the particulars as it, the years move on will come back before council. So, all right. Mr. Weber.
On, on that point, I'm curious. So one of the reasons I made the motion last week was because, oh, this was just to send it to the Department of Environmental Quality for their study. But actually, we're sending them a plan that we have given tacit approval to, right?
Mayor Bochensky and Councilmember Weber, you are choosing this option as, as what we've determined is the best option to move forward from a capital cost, from an operation maintenance, and just from a environmental quality. You know, us as a city of Grand Forks, we're going to say this is our preferred option to move forward.
Right. The state doesn't like it when we say this is our plan, check it out, they check it out, it comes back to us and we say, ah, we don't really mean this plan, we want a different plan. So we need to be clear about what plan we're sending to them.
Yes. And, you know, we've had a lot, we have technical experts in A2S, we have technical experts in our own operating staff, and our own leadership and management. And, uniformly, this is seen as the best option to move forward. Certainly, we submit facility plans, and as we move through, you know, this time horizon, if things are going to change, we can always adapt the plan. The state just wants to know that you have a facility plan. So when they start approving things and they start helping fund things, that we've got a well-thought-out plan for, as part of their investment in the city of Grand Forks.
Very good. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Any further comment? Mr. Sandy.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Phelan, I sent you an email earlier today, and thank you for, for your responses. In that email, I specifically said that I'm skeptical, and I wanted to point out to you that when I said that, I'm skeptical of engineers that work on projects that like to engineer things that benefit their own bottom line. So my skepticism doesn't come from internal, it comes from everyone else that wants to make a buck off, off the city of Grand Forks. I'm, and I really appreciate the mayor's question. I never thought of it in, in the terms that he provided, in the fact that it's inefficient when we get the new system up and running, and therefore we, we go out and try to sell the excess capacity. But doesn't that automatically build in, no matter what, our rates have to go up forever? We're, we're constantly chasing more spending. Because we have to spend because we have to fix, because we took up all the capacity. And the only way we can do that is to raise rates so that we can spend more, so that we can add more capacity. But then because we've added more capacity, we're running inefficiently. So we now have to go out and chase more users. And, and then we get ourselves right back in the same situation. Question. And maybe this is for Mr. Gaddy, our friend at A2S that desperately wants us to build a new one of these plants every 20 years. Does the, does the changing, does the technology change? Has it been changing over time? Are we just doing it more efficiently? Or, or are we doing the same process better? Or are we just taking up the old and putting it new, and it's essentially the same process? We're just doing it better?
Mayor Bochensky and, and Council President Sandy, I think this is going to be a better, more efficient way to treat it in the same footprint. And, you know, they chose a, an aerobic system back in the day with these tanks. And as we talked about at the City Council, we'll be able to, these tanks will be more efficient now than kind of the meandering way that they were operating before. So I think this is just a better way to utilize those reactors. And it's true to say, is that we're never going to be done investing in our wastewater treatment system, nor our wastewater collection system. As long as we're growing and developing, we're always going to do this. I think the other important dis similarity that we have from other communities, we're an agribusiness community. And with our agribusiness, and so our proportional flow and, and strength come from agribusiness. So really, we have a regional facility that's serving all these potato crops. It's in part serving American Crystal Sugar with Red River Biorefrinery. And I anticipate, you know, when we meet with economic development opportunities, this is why I would say that, I say to the Grand Forks Region EDC, sometimes when we bring big projects in that need infrastructure, we come in and we present tax incentives, we present Bank of North Dakota buy-down loans, but we don't do a good enough job talking about the infrastructure because without the last thing, those incentives would not matter. And so we're serving the entire region by doing what we're doing. And this asset is one of the most important things, not only for agribusiness, but the citizens of Grand Forks. Because back in the, you know, 1990s, they, we couldn't expand the lagoons anymore. We couldn't do all the things we've done. So really, when you look at that small footprint of that wastewater treatment plant that we showed you, it's incredible what that thing does compared to that 1,300 acres of lagoons. And eventually, we want to get to, you know, closing down a third of those lagoons too. And we've gone to direct discharge and through the lagoons. So we've got a lot of flexibility now. It's, but without that, it's hard for us to do a lot of other things, to include growing as a community.
Mr. Phelan, thank you. That is, I never actually thought of it that way. That you're right. If we want to continue our community growing, we have to be investing and investing in... in ourselves. And I never thought of it that way. And thank you. And so perhaps all the questions that I asked in my email weren't necessarily positioned from the right point of view. My only other question is, are, are we, if you, if you're saying, is that a, is that a policy decision when you say that we're, we're going to build for 20 years, the useful life is 20 years, and the people in that generation should pay for their own water treatment plant? Is that a policy? Or is that, Todd Phelan thinks that's the way it should, should be done?
Mayor Burchinsky and members of city council, as you all know, you guys are the policy board, we have a mayor, and then you have city staff that make recommendations. So anytime, other cities cash fund capital like this, certainly we'd have to start, it would be whole paradigm shift. It's kind of like special assessments. Let's get rid of special, but how do we get rid of them without additional revenue source? And then what about all the people that have already paid their fair share? So certainly, it has been the theory that these are enterprise funds, existing users should pay for those improvements during that life. And to cash fund enough for capital maintenance, maybe for even a down payment, but not for the, the entire, entire thing. So, I mean, if we were growing huge and maybe had a more straightforward thing, maybe we'd differ. But that's our balance. We are cash funding some of this. We are going to debt service something. So we're doing a little bit of a combination as we move forward and trying to utilize the state of North Dakota too for some really good financing.
Great. That, that leading, that leading question was related to, well, if this is the case, and we're going to use debt service, and every time some debts expires, then we're planning, planning for more debt. Do we get economies of scale by building bigger? And I get the whole, we'll be even less efficient right away. But should we be doing a 40-year project and financing over 40 years instead of 20 years? Do it twice as much or as big or as wide or as deep or whatever, whatever it is, so that, so that we get more economies of scale in the future?
I think that's a, that's a great question and probably the, you know, the hardest one to answer. You know, really, I mean, you make great points, and they're all probably related to growth. I mean, whether it's a road, whether it's a private entity, as you have growth, you're always trying to stay out in front of it. And you have to hope that you're, as you grow, that that sales tax revenue, property tax revenue is enough to either provide more services or to, you know, more amenities or lower cost to people. Even look at a private entity. Minn Kota has just given up, you know, 100 megawatts. Now, you know, they had all that capacity. Now they've got to spend like crazy to add capacity to it. So it certainly happens on both sides. But 40 years, yeah, I mean, that's a, I think that is a great question. I don't know how we land on that with technology improvements, because we've obviously seen a technology improvement in just the last 20 years based on what we built. And how do we not get too far in front? But I think the idea is that we have to be efficient enough so that our growth isn't costing our citizens that it's improving their lives. And this is probably a great conversation and a great piece to dig into that, but.
That may have been a rhetorical question. So, thank you.
That's why the answer took so long.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Vean, please.
Okay. I just wanted to bring up a couple items because I think there's a little more to the story that I don't know if it's completely relevant or not. But I was here in '95 when this thing was, was brought forth, and I was in Todd's position at that point in time. And there was a lot of, there was a ton of discussion about this wastewater plant. This was the transition from the lagoon system to a mechanical plant. It was a huge step the city had to make the decision of. We no longer could add, continue to add more lagoon storage and still be able to meet regulations. So it became inevitable to do this. The other thing that happened is that that time, as I recall, this was cutting-edge technology that we were bringing to Grand Forks as maybe one of the first locations that this technology was going to be used in. And so it was, it was brand new, as I recall back then, and it was, it was just something, just, just again, just, we were one of the first ones that was technology. I believe that was brought over some, someplace in Europe, and it came here, and we were going to be the ones that, that were, that used this technology. And I believe, if you think about it, it's been in place for 18 or 20 years. When you start treating wastewater, it's different than treating water. This is toxicity and corrosiveness and everything that goes with wastewater is entirely different than you have with other kind of treatments that happen. So I'm actually somewhat pleased that we've got this amount of usage out of that plant than what, than what maybe some would have anticipated you would get because you just don't get that from, from wastewater. I mean, again, it is entirely different. So I, I think, I think we've done well with what we've got. I appreciate the plan that was presented. I believe there's new technologies and ways of addressing, as we mentioned a week ago, with, with, instead of going around in a circle or whatever we were with the treatment classes, it was going to be done individually. And so I think those are things that have been learned over the years. I, I don't know of any engineers who are out to try to college us and make a buck. I think that was the technology and the best that people could have expected that, at that time. I think this is a natural progression of where we are today in how we're going to have to continue to update this. And this isn't going to be the end-all because even if we don't grow, again, it's going to wear out. This is, this is just a part of that process. So I think, again, I supported the motion and think this is, is the best way forward for the city. I think if there's, the only thing that I can think of is if you want to address how it's paid for, that, that always can be addressed. But I do like the fact, and I've touted this in, in Bismarck many times, we are probably the one community in North Dakota that has water-intensive industry. The rest of, very, very few others actually do that. And that has brought with itself its own set of jobs, and you see what's happening with Simplot and the Red River Bio Refinery and other things. And not only do you create those jobs, you have the, the knockoff jobs that come to support that. And all of that has been helpful. So it's really hard to exactly precisely say, you know, who's supporting who and what you're doing when you design your rates. And we'll have to talk about that in the future. But I, I don't know. I guess I think this is a great motion, and I think it's the right thing to do. And I think the timing is right, and we may have opportunity to get help in financing and funding this type of improvement.
Thank you, Mr. Vean. Mr. Cavani?
I have a couple of questions that council member Vean kind of touched on. So just quickly, so $31 million is what we're retiring. And so Phase 1 and Phase 2 are $44.9 million. So is it safe to assume we could do $31 million worth of work without a rate increase?
Mayor Burchinsky and council member Cavani, I think that's true. The other thing is, we're going to have another $5 million come off, I think in '26, 2026. So plus, over the time, we've, we've added a lot of users, and we've added a lot of flow and billings to that with adding some of these industries like East Grand Forks and Red River Bio Refinery. So what is, our denominator is higher now.
Sure. And so our increase is basically the difference between those amounts that are dropping off. And so in my mind, looking at that difference, I, I want to see it as X number of jobs, right? And for me, then I can support that, I can get behind that, and that makes sense. I guess I think that's, that's something that our, you know, we've talked about at a great length, the Red River Valley Bio Refinery, are they paying their fair share? I think we've talked about that a lot, but that's still the questions that I'm hearing from the public. So maybe we need to do a better effort of making sure our businesses that are water-intensive, we are able to fully explain that so that when someone stops me on the street, I can explain, yep, they're absolutely paying their fair share. And if they're not, it's because they're bringing 100 jobs, which then I, I can get behind that too. So I guess that's my only, it's not really a question, maybe it's, I would like some help understanding.
Mayor Burchinsky and council member Cavani, I think this is a very good question. The truth is, everyone's paying their fair share, whether you're residential, commercial, or heavy industrial like these. I think even if you look at this, we'll call it this renovated plan, say we, we invest another $40 million, wherever that is, you know, existing industry will pay for their fair share of that, those improvements. And then if a new industry comes into town, we're going to, we're going to do a cost of service and rate-making, and they're going to pay their fair share. And when Mr. Gaddy was here last week, he also had those, those bioreactors, and then you could set some, you know, some additional treatment capacity within that if we get a large, heavy industry. So say, for instance, that happens, we're building these, and something big comes in that we need to increase that capacity, that treatment capacity, that little cartridge that's going to be placed into that reactor, that'll be incorporated into their cost of service to do that. So not only will they pay for those reactor tanks that we did and all those improvements, they'll pay specifically for that, needing to put that cartridge in there too. So they'll pay for both of those things. So everyone should know that the citizens of Grand Forks are not paying for that industry moving forward. They're probably, we're going to build this plan. I think we're looking at, Mayor, I was going to say a 15 to 20-year time horizon with population gains and maybe one large industry that will be placed in there. And when we look at growth, because I think if we look at too much growth, people are saying, well, you build it, what if they don't come? Then we're all stuck paying. And that was a lot of the discussion. If you were here in 2000s, I heard that a lot. So the second half of the decade proved out better than the first half on that excess capacity question.
You know, if, if I could just add one comment to that. One of the things I think that we've been doing really well is trying to be proactive with having infrastructure in place so we can attract people. We're like shovel-ready, we've got it in place. We did that with water. We've done that with even development waste, with lift stations and water distribution and stuff like that. You know, we did, we went out to Western North Dakota, I think, when they were doing some of the massive growth out there. And we, we went out and we listened a little bit. And the way the east was going to grow was to have infrastructure in place and be ready for the future. And I think that's one thing we've done a pretty good job of, and that this is an example of how we might want to do that. I think there's limits to how far. But the fact that we can do that, I think, is going to be of value for us, for our, our potential opportunity to grow in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Vean. Further comments? All right, seeing none. We have a motion. Mr. Vean motions, Mr. Weber seconds. Any further comment? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. 4.8, thank you.
4.9, Public Works Facility Renewal Project Number 8251, Field Depot and Generators Award Bid and Associated Budget Amendment.
Yeah, Todd, I think I'm just going to open up on this one and just, you know, this is the, the concern that happens, I think, when you look at, you know, trying to estimate maybe where inflation is at, estimate if a bid's high, especially when you only have one bid, at least on the general contractor side. So I think that's probably where the consternation comes from, is that maybe don't we have quite enough on these numbers to fully get there? Do you want to, I guess, expound on that? And we can have a conversation, see where we want to go with this one tonight?
Like you said, Mayor Burchinsky, you had some good feedback. You know, Mayor and I talked, we decided, let's go ahead with this bid, because coming out of the pandemic, it's two needed projects. You know, we should have probably had generators before at the Public Works facility, and then these, these fuel tanks to get them above ground. And they're, they're approaching 30 years. So what, the mayor and I, and I'd also talked to council president Sandy and council member Cavani, because we don't have all the answers, why don't we punt to the June 7 meeting, and we'll, we'll work with EA PC and get in some of those details. Once we get the details, our staff will, will make another recommendation back. And that might be, hey, let's move forward, this is as good as it gets, needed projects. Or the, the other option, I'm pondering, similar to what we were thinking of even before, we said, go ahead, Public Works, is maybe work it into, into this year's budget process for '22 and hopefully bid it over the, the wintertime when we get a better bid. But let us get some more information. We'll, Mayor and I will work with Public Works, and we'll come up with a recommendation on June 7, which would be your next city council meeting.
Do you want a motion to postpone to June 7?
Yeah, I mean, I think that probably makes the most sense at this point, rather than, you know, voting it down or making a decision tonight. So.
I'll make that mention.
Okay, we got a motion to postpone this item until June 7, and a second from, from Mr. Council President Sandy, a second from Mr. Cavani. Yeah, Mr. Vean?
Mr. Phelan, can you push the law? Can you tell me why we're doing this project?
Sure. We're going to, we're going to, we're going to put backup generation at the Public Works facility. It's one of the things we never added. We've been in the Public Works facility, and we've made some improvements over the years. I would say, this would be far my time, but I'm going to say circa 1995, we moved Public Works in. And we've done some expansions and renovations, but that's when we moved in. They never put in generators to begin with. You know, it's one of those projects, when you don't put it in at the start, it's always hard to add a large project like that. So I think it's something that we wanted to do for, for a while. Now we have an opportunity with, with some cash on hand to do that. That's number one project. And I think that we could, obviously, anything bad can happen on any given Sunday around here, but we can move that. The tanks, we also want to move the refueling island over to where, you know, the recycling is in our yardway site. It's a more convenient location, would open up some development where the tanks are now facing 47th. We'd also move those tanks above ground and renew those tanks. And then we reuse a lot of the stuff we've done. So that's essentially the project. We are getting some, the tanks are getting older, so we are getting, we, we have had some water issues over the last couple of years. So time is of the essence, but it's not like, we, we have a couple of weeks to analyze the cost.
Well, and I think that's kind of what I was alluding to. I think what makes this project maybe different, and we still need the information you're talking about, but you said the tanks are at the end of their useful life, and they were installed in the 90s and require constant monitoring, and you're now getting water into the fuel, or fuel can get into the, into the groundwater and other things too. So I think that there's some environmental reasons why we probably should be looking at this project. I know that there's issues with costs, but I, I don't want to forget those other issues that are happening that, that we don't want to be a part of. We don't, we don't need groundwater pollution because our tanks are leaking. And I think that's, that's the biggest piece for me. The other improvements sound great too. I mean, if you're going to do it, do it right. So.
And Mayor Burchinsky, and this project's really moved forward with the people that have to operate the pumps, the operations staff. So sometimes us as administrators, sometimes we go, we can always delay that. But when real people that do real things and have to make things happen on any given night, they come to us, this is a priority project. That's why the mayor and I said, let's move forward and get some bids. So, you know, it's later in the spring, we probably should have done it earlier rather than later. There's lots of, we can beat, I'll beat myself up about the whole thing, but we are where we're at. And so we'll come back with more information two weeks from now.
Yeah, I don't think anyone disagrees that it needs to be done. It's just, you know, when you see something coming 32% above the engineer's estimate, and engineers that have been, you know, pretty spot on a lot of times, it's concerning. So. Any further comment? All right, we got a motion to postpone until June 7, and a second. All those in favor, June 7. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. All right, we got, yeah, we got 413 as well.
Yeah, 413, Introduction of Ordinance and Preliminary Approval of Request to Amend the Zoning Map and Rezone B3, General Business District Lots 2 and 4, Block 7, Villard's Edition, located at A12 and A20, South 14th Street.
All right, do we have a comment or motion? Got a motion approved from Mr. Weigle. A second, second from Mr. Vean. Further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
4.14, Introduce Ordinance and Preliminary Approval of a Request to Amend Chapter 18 Land Development Code to Include Downtown Design Standards.
Ms. Edwardson, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Hopefully, I can get through this. We'll see if I can make it. Otherwise, Brooks is on standby. But wanted to come tonight to talk about the design standards. It's one of the biggest code updates my department has taken on in some years. Due to some staffing changes in our department, this project has gotten picked up and put down a couple of different times. So we're finally happy to see it through and see it coming forward. So with that, I'll run through a quick history of where we're at, how we got here, and then I'm going to pass it over to Charlie Cal with RDG Planning and Design, who's our consultant, and he'll walk through the, meet to the changes. So in 1999, the Downtown Design Review Board established design guidelines that helped guide post-flood recovery federal dollars. Fast forward 20 years later, we don't really have federal funds influencing or in being impacted with private development. So we have a need to see more modern design and modern architect because those original guidelines were focused on historic preservation, maintaining our historic district downtown to not lose that integrity as flood recovery was happening. So now we need to shift more towards maintain our historic element because that does give us a unique character, but also implement more modern design standards. Currently, our process is that anything that requires an exterior building permit in the downtown has to go through a board approval. So that means your standard building maintenance, replacing windows, replacing doors, minor siding repairs, sign change swaps, those simple day-to-day things that most people walk up to the inspections counter and just get a permit, require a board approval. And so we've seen some, you can imagine, we've seen some delays with that. So with that process, the board and business owners have frequently asked for us to have updated standards. Right now, there are guidelines, there's suggestions, and we've, most people have followed them to, to the character intent. But those guidelines have limited us in our enforcement abilities needing standards. Board has asked for these to be done for some years. Business owners have asked for improved process. The Downtown Action Plan, which happened a couple of years ago, took a look at our process, verified some of those needs, and had a recommendation for us to come forward with updating the standards. So we built on that momentum, hired a consultant, and are now where we are for updating them. This process, like I said, has been a lengthy one, and I have to thank the Downtown Design Review Board members who acted as our steering committee and kind of held on throughout, provided some great feedback. We use the DDA's. feedback. We use the DDA Urban Design Committee as a focus group as well. And then last September, we went out for neighborhood input sessions, mailed notices to the property owners within the B4, asked them to attend, gave them some information. Little attendance there, but for the most part, we're making the process easier. So I don't think many people had much, maybe objections to it. So with that, kind of our history, and then I will kick it over. Hopefully, Charlie's all hooked up and ready to go.
Mr. Cowell?
Yeah, thank you, Andrea. Mayor and council, thanks for allowing me to speak this evening. I just wanted to take a few minutes to touch on some of the higher level things and maybe elaborate a little bit more on some of the items that Andrea had spoken about. Just wanted to share my screen here and get a short presentation going. Where do you go? So tonight, just wanted to really touch on a few items. The current review procedures, kind of some of the impetus for the updates, what's really the main differences between what we see now as design standards versus the process under the design guidelines? And then obviously answer any questions or comments with the help of city staff. Let's see, switch here. There we go. So as Andrea mentioned, this was, this project was an initiative coming out of the Downtown Action Plan, and really started immediately, or even during the Downtown Action Plan, identifying what some of the standards might be if they were different than how the guidelines were currently written. One of the major things with the process that Andrea mentioned was taking out some of the complexity with the application process and review required by the DDRB. The current review procedures, as you see here, and what Andrea just had mentioned, DDRB really approves and denies all plans subject to, subject to subjective review of the design guidelines. And then it will come to P and Z, and your council appeals to those decisions. So this does cover all the downtown historic district area and all of the bullet point items here. So what the process really started by taking the downtown design guidelines as they're developed today. And we understand there's, we understood at the time, there was many good things in there. There was many things that needed to be maintained. In fact, most of it was considered to be very relevant still. But really, just making sure it's standardized and enforceable under the current ordinance. The other bullets listed here, we're going to reflect the Downtown Action Plan, being more objective and removing those subjective statements throughout. We were protecting historic quality of buildings and then streamlining the approval process. So the current boundary, as you see the ordinance in front of you, is the entire B-zone zoning district shown here. That is not changing any district boundaries of that, just identifying that area as the applicability of the design standards. So there's a few things in the next series of slides. I'm going to touch on what is, what is different from the guidelines. The major difference obviously is they're now as written as more standards rather than guidelines, meaning using statements like shall instead of should, must instead of may sort of thing. So but one, perhaps the biggest difference is that staff reviews and approves all items, which can make that process relatively quickly. There are items that do require referral to DDRB listed here. These are major things like redevelopment of a site, any new construction, additions, accessory buildings, and major architectural changes. This process does not take away the ability for staff to refer anything to the DDRB. The staff, if it chooses any item that is not listed in the bullet point list here, can be referred to DDRB if the staff feels it's important for DDRB to review the item. So with the specific sections, we'll start with signage and then move on through kind of various sections of the, of the standards. There are a couple of changes that came up through the process of talking to DDRB. And these were things that had been talked about for a while. They weren't relatively new to this process. But adding more clarity to things like window signage, as far as how much a window they can cover, adding standards for projecting signs, which wasn't really very clear in the existing guidelines. Perhaps one of the major items was reducing, excuse me, eliminating the permit requirements for A-frame or sandwich board signs. So those would no longer require a permit as written in the current code. And then pretty much everything else in the B4 signage would remain the same as it is today. So really no significant changes to how signage would be applied today. There are a few things regarding building siding that needed to be clarified quite a bit more. There's a lot of subjectivity in the guidelines requiring in regards to the standard. One thing is limiting the amount of ground floor residential on the, for just along the first 40, 40 feet of Fronte Jet Street intersection. So this would basically say, ground floor residential is allowed except for at intersections of major streets that would, that would have to be retained as a commercial office, retail, whatever it may be. And one thing that's enforced, as well as maximum street setbacks, is saying the buildings have to be built to a certain number of feet rather than a minimum number of feet. That's really not going to change much. That's the character of downtown today. Buildings are built to the property line, and this will just really maintain that character. Parking and site access, there's a few changes in here from the guidelines to standards. More off-street parking is prohibited now in the side yard under the, under this ordinance. So it really did not allow an instance where maybe there's a building, then a vacant lot, then another building. It wouldn't allow parking to front the street in that side yard. They have to be located in the rear of the building, access from an alley or a street that's adjacent, or that leads into an alley or side alley. And then just further clarified from some protections and screening of parking areas next to residential districts. There's a few instances in the B4 area where this is, this is prevalent, but not, not many. But just being clear on what those protections and screening requirements would be. Regarding mass and scale, current guidelines have a lot of, a handful of bullet points indicating what is desired regarding mass and scale of buildings. There's just no numbers or anything to really regulate on in those guidelines. So really, the section in the standard just supplies numbers to what the intent is of that section. So nothing specific changed, other than being more objective in what those previous guidelines have stated. We did add a quite a bit more material related to architectural materials that can be used on buildings. This was really meant at the goal to take, obviously take out a lot of subjectivity, but focused more on stating what's prohibited versus what's allowed. We know in our industry, in architectural industry, materials are, there's new materials we introduce every year under different names, usually for the good, higher quality, lasts longer, and so forth. So we focused in, in the standards as shown, as really just focusing on the things we don't want to see. And we meant kind of open for everything else to, to be allowed or happen downtown. So there's an expanded list of prohibited and special exception materials and how those can be allowed in the downtown. Demolition was mentioned. Demolition and additions were mentioned in the guidelines, but fairly, rather vague. So we did, with the help of the DDRB and staff, create a more objective demolition standard in the, in the ordinance. This requires anything with, any building that is considered a contributing historic structure to the downtown historic district to submit a permit for any demolition of that building. This really just gives time for the Historic Preservation Commission to document the historic qualities of that building, whether it's photo and narrative evidence, or so on and so forth. But it sets up a time to review that with DDRB, and then also, like I said, the Historic Preservation to get time to document the plan, or document the building. Keep in mind, this is only written for contributing historic buildings in the downtown. So any building that's considered non-contributing, or just a nonhistoric building, would still be allowed to demolish a building under normal building code permits as they do today. And then outside, there's a few additional things outside of what the existing guidelines have in them. One is related to parklets. So there's downtown pilot program currently operating downtown. So this change in ordinance includes updates to the sidewalk seating permitting, and really just qualifies some of those parklet requirements based on how that pilot program is going today. So this is something that was not in, necessarily directly in the downtown design guidelines previously, but a new item that is included in this ordinance. And so the criteria, criteria for review, regardless if it's staff reviewing or the DDRB reviewing, still remain the same, using, referencing the Secretary of Interior Standards for any historic buildings in the downtown area, using this, this ordinance, the downtown Grand Forks design standards. And then anything that's not covered in the downtown design standards, the other applicability of B4 zoning district regulations would still apply as they do today. So you may see something here, such as the number of parking stalls that might be required, or whatever it may be, that's not listed in these design standards. Then that would refer back to the existing B4 regulations. So it's kind of a very high level summary of some of the major, major changes and notes from the process. Obviously, a lot of discussion with the DDRB, a lot of getting very into the weeds on a lot of different items. But I think, as we heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission, the DDRB kind of was very satisfied with the impact of where it stands. And look forward to taking any questions or comments, you know, from you now.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell. Any questions for Ms. Edwardson or Mr. Cowell? Mr. Weigle, please.
I'll be brief. My question is, we've got all these standards and everything for downtown Grand Forks. Is there anywhere else in the city of Grand Forks that is as strict as downtown?
We do have a corridor overlay district running along our main commercial corridors. South Washington, primarily like 32nd Avenue, not the built core, but what's new, South Columbia Road, North Washington, once you kind of get further past Gateway. Those do come with building material standards and siding standards. The downtown, we are shifting from a more generic, I guess, like the rest of the zoning districts are laid out to a kind of a hybrid form-based code, which instead of minimum setbacks, gives you maximum setbacks. It's a complete opposite of how we would cite a building, like say, on 32nd Avenue South, where the buildings are pushed back and the parking lots are in front. There's a need downtown to flip that requirement, right? I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but the Gate City development downtown is very a suburban-style development. Going forward, we want to see downtown to the more urban form, and putting these standards into place guarantees us that. And so otherwise, you can get a Gate City, you could, you could get a Gate City where the Argyle sits, based under the current way we have it. So there's a need to require that built-to form to keep our urban core, sorry, to keep it urban.
And my last question would be is, do we, do we think it's going to prohibit from more people wanting to develop downtown? Because I think the more rules we place on some of this stuff, and I understand it, it was important in, after '97, I just wonder with, with so many of these rules, if we prohibit people from wanting to develop. And I remember a development came forward, and they said, one of the reasons I need some assistance with the property taxes is because it's so expensive to develop this, because it's such a historic building. So I wonder if we, some of these rules, we actually hurt some of our chances of redevelopment.
There's definitely a challenge in preserving historic buildings, and it's a very costly endeavor to do so. So in that particular case, it probably was challenging to maintain a historic building. As far as new developments go, we have asked architects to weigh in, and developers for that matter. Even developers we know have projects coming down the pipeline. We've asked them to evaluate these standards and say, is this overly burdensome? Because you're right, we do not want to prohibit development. We want to encourage it. We just want to encourage it with a more standardized, guaranteed form. I haven't heard any negative feedback saying they're overly burdensome. The architectural materials are open enough that they can have a variety of options to choose from. The historic side of things, it is still a little bit strict, but that comes from wanting to preserve that historic nature of the building. So as far as new development goes, I haven't heard any feedback that says we're adopting anything overly burdensome.
And then my last question, Mayor. When, when Dana comes forward with $2 million and wants to develop, and he wants to do something different, is there an appeal process?
100%. Any staff decision can be appealed to DDRB. Any DDRB decision gets appealed to city council.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other comments? I didn't know Dana was building something, $2 million.
Megan might not know either.
Oh, bad timing then, huh? Mr. Weber?
I'll move approval.
We got a motion to approve. We have a second?
I'll second. I have a comment.
Yep, please, we got a second from Mr. Sandy. Please.
Ms. Edwardson, there are a couple places within the document where it asks for input. And I don't think at Cowell or here, we've spoken about it. Well, we certainly didn't at Cowell. I'm not sure it was, how in-depth it was. But if people read, read the document, there are a couple places within it where it suggests that there's, for example, on demolition of properties, it specifically says, we're looking for more input from commission and council. So I don't, I'm not necessarily saying we need to get into that tonight. What I am saying is, if you have thoughts about it, you should email them to Ms. Edwardson so that she has that information for any future meeting. Thank you.
Yes. And thank you, Mr. Sandy, for pointing that out. I was remiss to not mention that before. There are two portions where we did hear input from, based on our neighborhood input sessions, one from a developer regarding the demolitions. Wondering if that was creating something more subjective. Our whole goal of this is to create objective standards. That is still a subjective element, but depending on where you fall on the preservation line, delaying a demolition enough to document a building may be a worthy enough addition to the code. The other piece of it that we had received input from was on digital signage downtown, asking to allow digital signage. Staff's recommendation, current guideline, guideline, excuse me, prohibit digital signage downtown. Staff would like to stick with that recommendation. Given the pedestrian element and the street fundages of downtown, having digital signage would create a very different feel for our downtown, that staff thinks we should continue to prohibit digital signs, but we would open that up for feedback as well. Those are the two main points we heard from input sessions. And like Mr. Sandy said, please ask now, or feel free to email me.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Cowell and Ms. Edwardson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No information on them tonight. So number six, citizen comments. Open the floor for citizen comments. Anything on the city email?
We have none.
Thank you. Seven, approval of minutes and bills?
7.1 is the vendor list as presented.
We have a motion to approve the vendor list. Mr. Sandy motions. Ms. Doc, for seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Vendor list is approved. 7.2.
Minutes from March 1st.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Motion for Mr. Weigle. We have a second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Mr. Phelan, eight, city administrator comments. What have you got for us tonight?
Mayor Bocinski, members of city council. Your next city council meeting will be June 7. I think we have, Memorial Day is on a Monday. So on behalf of Mayor Bocinski, we are planning to have Team Grand Forks Legislative Group come. I mentioned that. So they'll kind of highlight some of our successes across the community, and maybe look forward to the interim and beyond. Also, working with Mayor Bocinski and everyone else on the budget. So we anticipate at that meeting to have some of our initial budget indicators to include our salary and benefit plan. So one of the things we did, we did defer some of the compensation due to COVID. So. so that'll be a plan that you all want to procure or so on. So we're working on that, so. And then finally, working on some development updates too, for the City Council meeting on June 7th. So it'll be a longer meeting on June 7th, probably not for action items or probably some presentations that are going to be critical for you to know and want to get included in on, so. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Number nine, Mayor and Councilmember comments. Mr. Weigle, any comments tonight?
Just thank you to all of our law enforcement officers throughout the community, our state and the country for their sacrifices, and it's great that we observe National Police Week here in Grand Forks.
Thank you, Mr. Weigle and Ms. Docler. Mr. Weber.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Cavani?
I just want to echo what Councilmember Weigle stated. Also want to thank anyone that participated with our promotions that we had with all kinds of local businesses supporting National Law Enforcement Week. Another item is just a couple of weeks ago, we had a public meeting with engineering, and I came to that public meeting with a very clear viewpoint, and we had 10 or so folks on the Zoom, and they changed my mind. So to those 10 folks, I appreciate your input and you guys taking the time to attend the public meeting, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cavani, Mr. Veen.
Just a question and maybe, on the budget process this year, we have the presentation, I'm just getting that on the 7th, right? That's what you just talked about. And then the mayor, there's no other meetings until the July 19th when you present the mayor's budget, is that right? There's anything in between?
We'll let Ms. Dorst add.
Mayor Bochensky, Councilmember Veen, I don't have the timeline right in front of me. We have internal meetings, we do have the salary plan along with growth indicators. We do also have a joint meeting with the Alaris Center Commission that's scheduled for June 30th.
Right.
Leading into the presentation of the budget on July 19th. That does open it up if you want meetings following that before preliminary approval.
Yeah, and that's what I was just trying to, I want to get these things on my calendar so I can try to be here. And, and you know, there's just the one meeting on, on the 7th, because I think I've got your. And then, then the mayor's, and then it'll be question and answer after the mayor does the presentation of the mayor's budget then, right?
Yes, and I did not send an invite out other than the joint meeting, and you should have received an invite from Ms. Rosberg for the joint meeting to get on your calendar. It'll be part of your council meetings as an agenda item as we do presentations. So I didn't send a separate invite, but we'll include those as part of your agenda when we're presenting the budget and the salary plan.
I mean, previously, we've had sometimes a number of sessions on utilities and rates and all of that. We're not doing that then this time?
In working with Mayor Bochensky and the administration, we had, have not scheduled those work sessions, but, but like I said, we will be presenting the budget in time where you should be able to have follow-up work sessions if, if you choose a city council discuss prior and in between preliminary approval and final approval.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Veen. Vice President Mock? President Sandy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I meant no disrespect to my engineering friends out there who work really hard and certainly want the best for our community. I was being sarcastic, so my, my apologies to my engineering friends and the folks at NA2S, of course, as well. The mayor, I believe the minutes were just added to, although I moved approval of the minutes, I, I haven't read them, and they just got emailed or added to the agenda like an hour and a half ago, so I, I'm guessing nobody up here actually has read them. I wonder if we shouldn't carry those over again so we have time to, to read them. Put them on the next agenda as well, so that if anyone has any questions or comments, although I'm okay keeping them approved.
You've got a lot of faith in the council here.
We can definitely attach those.
Yeah, let's add them, and if there's any adjustments, we can have that at the next.
Great, and lastly, I'd like to thank Colonel Pringle, Grand Forks Air Force Base. He was nice enough to nominate me to go to Air War College, which I attended last week in Montgomery, Alabama. I had the opportunity to rub elbows with some of the top military officials. Certainly, the, the chief of the Air Force was there, and I had dinner with him, which was, seeing as he's on the joint, joint chiefs. I was humbled, which it's hard for a guy with my ego to be humbled, right? So, and of course, General Raymond was there as well. Both of them have recently been to Grand Forks Air Force Base, and so it was good for me to have an opportunity to tout the good things that Grand Forks Air Force Base has for, adds to our community, and certainly was trying to convince them that more missions and larger missions for the Grand Forks Air Force Base would be good for our community. So thank you again to Colonel Pringle. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Sandy, for taking time out of your schedule to be able to attend that, making our community a better and more informed place. All I got today is the weather is great outside, everybody get a chance to go outside and pray for some rain as well, and, oh, thank you, everybody. Ten, motion adjourned, we got a motion from Mr. Sandy, second from Mr. Weber. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.
Did you have fun tonight?